Call this meeting to order. The F M County Planning Board Meeting, August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Like to welcome everyone. We're going to open this meeting with a word of prayer. We're gonna follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to ask that everyone who can, please stand with us for both.
Mr. Grace, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time. We come out and discuss these issues of F M County. We just asked that this would be a meeting that is meaningful in your sight, Lord. And just ask that you would give us all safe travel home tonight. Um, we just ask you continue to be with our country and our leaders, um, and always be with our troops and first responders that keep us safe, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our agenda, are there any items that need to be changed?
Yes, item nine has been postponed to September tenth, Planning Board Meeting.
Item nine has been postponed until when? September tenth?
September tenth, yes.
September tenth. Any additional changes?
No, sorry.
Call for a meeting, I mean, a motion to approve this agenda with the noted changes?
Make a motion to approve with the noted changes for item number nine.
Second, Mr. Thompson, all is in favor. Any opposed, motion carried by all. For anyone that did not hear that, item number nine, that's Neil McKenzie as agent for Nick Finland. I'm just requesting, um, to change two hundred twenty-one acres from A R one to R five. This is on Goshen Road, has been postponed until September the tenth by request of the applicant. Minutes from July ninth. Corrections, additions, comments? Call for a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Higgins, others in favor? Any opposed, motion carried by all. So all items presented tonight will be heard again at our Board of Commissioners Meeting. That meeting is also a public hearing. It is in this room, six o'clock, and that meeting is on September the third. Items that are approved as well as denied will move forward to the County Commissioners. Um, we'd like to ask that everyone who wishes to speak tonight, when the item, um, of your concern is called, that you would come forward to the podium, that you would state your name for the record as well as sign your name for the record. And, um, when I call the item, staff will present and then we'll give the applicant a chance to come up, and then anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against will have plenty of, what is going on over here? Plenty of opportunity to.
What you talking about?
Plenty of opportunity to speak. Item number one is a public hearing for Bo Langham as agent for Matthew and Ryan Davis. Request approval for a pond less than one acre located at twenty-six forty-three Courthouse Road. This is the fourth district. Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. So the applicant is requesting approval for a point five zero acre pond. Um, the reason that it does have to come before a Planning Board and it will go before the Board of Commissioners, um, per the ordinance, um, is because the dirt will be moved off-site. The applicant has provided an erosion control plan. Um, that is what the picture that you see there is. And the pond will be surrounded by a fifty-foot buffer. Staff recommends alternative number one.
Questions, comments from the board? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
I can answer any questions. My name is Bo Langham, submitted the application, so.
All right, thanks, sir. Any questions? No. If nothing further, I'll call for a motion, make a motion to approve. Have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Thompson, all is in favor? Any opposed, motion carried by all. Thank you, sir. Item two is a public hearing for Jorge Lopez. Request a conditional use to allow for a rural business for commercial truck parking in A R two located at two thirty-eight Midland Drive. It's the first district. Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. So again, this applicant is requesting that conditional use for a rural business. Um, this property is owned A R two. Uh, this is an active code enforcement case, and so by requesting this rural business, uh, the applicant is taking a step toward coming into compliance. Um, the applicant has stated that it will be about six trucks that are parked at this residence. And when we say trucks, we're not talking about, um, you know, eighteen-wheelers or rigs. We're talking F one fifty trucks, um, or vans of that nature. The rural business is consistent with, uh, the future land use map. As you can see here on your screen, um, that picture to, uh, you're right, is the future land use map. Staff does recommend, um, alternative number one.
All right, questions at this time? Is there anyone else, Mr. Lopez, or anyone else wish to speak?
We're residents in that area.
Yes, is Mrs., one, is Mr. Lopez our representative here?
I'm here for him, but I work.
All right, so could you come forward, please? Give you an opportunity, just a second.
I need to re-gerodrigas just for that, for the record.
Thank you. Could I get you to sign in, please, sir?
What is the, uh, is he gonna answer any questions?
So could you explain your business?
Yeah, so I, I work for Jorge Lopez. I'm a field supervisor at the paint company, and, um, currently.
Can I get you to get a little closer?
Yeah. Currently, we park a couple of vehicles there, some, some twenty-five hundred vans, and then some Tacomas there for our business. We work in South Carolina doing, uh, painting and stuff.
So is it your personal vehicles that you're driving to the site to get into his trucks and then drive to South Carolina?
Yeah, so, uh, some of the, some of the employees live on the site, and then they, uh, get the vans there in the morning, and they go pick up the other workers off-site, and then they go, and then when they come home, they park the vehicles there.
So is there a shop or any work take place?
Uh, no, well, we have a central, uh, we work in Latitude Margaritaville, which is a big neighborhood, and we have, like, Conexes, but we've been having issues with, um, like, uh, theft there when we leave our vans and sprayers, so we try to park it at the house so it gets more secure and there's cameras.
But I'm saying you don't do any work at this residence? No shop, no nothing?
No, it's just to park the vehicles and, and then get to work. No painting business here.
Ms. Chelsea, is this a code enforcement case?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions at this time? Ryan, you got anything?
Yeah, is there anything screening the trucks or the vehicles from the view of neighbors, general public driving down the street? Is that a condition or anything that we've got that we would be putting on this?
Do you, are you asking, the vans are marked the premium, they're marked with the company name and stuff?
Well, I guess I'm, I meant, is it just parked in the front or side yard where it's directly visible from everybody going down the adjacent street?
Yeah, they're, they're parked in the front.
And Chelsea, do they have to submit a site plan or anything showing where they're parking?
Um, I'll double-check the ordinance for you. I have, um, put on there as a condition, um, that the truck parking may not exceed the thousand square feet, which, um, again, is part of that ordinance. Um, if you would like to add screening, that is something you can add as a condition, but I will check the ordinance for you.
All right, thank you, sir. We may have some questions in a moment, but thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, Jason Sanders. I live directly across the street from them. We have already had several issues with them parking semis in the road where school buses can't pass, and it's six vans and about four personal vehicles that's in the yard every night. Our road is already rough and needs repair, and I don't think extra traffic should be allowed on that road as it is now. Two cars can't hardly pass on it. They've been doing a lot of construction over there. There's been a lot of truck traffic in and out, semi trucks, cement trucks, I mean, all kind of stuff.
And they're leaving the semis there at night?
The semi part, we actually had to call F and M County to have them move it because it blocked the road for almost two weeks.
So it's the tractor and the trailer?
Tractor and it's a flatbed trailer, yes, sir.
But you understand this, this is not, um, in any way to allow tractor-trailer.
But they have been.
Yeah, I know.
And I understand it's not to allow that.
We got any pictures of those tractor-trails over there?
I don't.
I mean, I believe him.
I don't know if I've got any with me still.
Do you?
No.
I mean, Officer Morris is the one that come out and had them move the vehicle. I don't know if he took any pictures.
So I, I guess what we're discussing tonight is a rural business that's gonna allow them to park their vans.
Six vans, and each night about six head gets out of each van. Uh, so I mean, we're, they're overoccupied in a single-family home anyways.
And do those six individuals get in six other trucks as well and leave?
No, they pile up in the vans in the morning and leave.
Yeah, but they had to get there.
No, they live on site.
Oh, they live there?
Yes, sir. This is a rural-based business that they are all living there.
There.
I don't know exactly, but I've seen at least twenty-five head a night.
Every night?
Every night, and every morning.
How many bedro?
Uh, originally, it was a four-bedroom home. They've added on to it, and they've built a lot of extra stuff to it, so I don't know now. My biggest concerns, I've got small children, I have friends that have small children, and the amount of extra traffic that's coming. We've already had issues with them speeding, like I said, the semis was blocking the road and everything. I mean, these guys is coming and going at all hours.
How big is your lot?
My lot? I'm across the street. I think it's one point five.
And that's about similar to the size of this one?
Yes, sir. I'm directly across the street at two thirty-three.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, to answer Mr. Thompson's question, uh, the ordinance does not specifically state anything to the screening.
Mr. Chair, can you ask him how big the house is? How many square feet? It's fire code. I mean, I'm wondering if maybe we need to delay this conversation until.
No, there are bigger issues than what we're discussing.
Yeah, I think it goes way past this.
Or there's another option, I'm ready to make that one, too.
Pictures, I don't have one of the semi, but that's.
Well, you, feel free to make either one. I mean, I'm, I'm, I think, maybe, yeah.
Well, I, I'm gonna make a motion to deny based off, granted, this is A R two, but it's an obvious planned subdivided, uh, neighborhood that, to me, parking six commercial vehicles is not a justifiable variance, so I make a motion to deny.
Have motion for denial, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Others in favor of denial? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. So once again, as I stated earlier, this is a recommendation to the County Commissioners, so this will move forward to the Commissioners on September third with a recommendation for denial. I saw several people come in, um. Item number nine, which is Neil McKenzie, um, as the rezoning on Goshen Road, has been postponed until September tenth. Sorry if anyone drove here for that. You did. We'll stick around and pay attention. Item number three is Kenneth Souls, request a variance from ordinance section three point twenty-one point one to allow for occupation of a RV camper located at two seventy-seven Horseshoe Road, is on A R one, is the first district. Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. So again, the applicant has requested that variance to allow the occupation of an RV camper. Um, staff did meet with this applicant, um, and in that discussion, the applicant has stated they are currently renovating, um, a mobile home for their family member, and, um, their family member would like to stay in that RV, um, until the mobile home is ready. Based on that information, staff is recommending approval for this variance. Um, the conditions that, um, have been placed on this, um, should the renovations take longer than twelve months, the applicant would need to come back before the board to get an extension for that, and then any renovations to the mobile home shall comply with all applicable building codes. Um, so again, staff does recommend alternative number one.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments from the board at this time?
So is it twelve months for, how long have they been there? Has this been going on for five months? And they have seven more months, or?
So the twelve months would start from the time if the board does approve it. Yes, sir.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Yes, sir.
I'm Kenneth Souls, I've, when I applied, and we just trying to, it was a abandoned mobile home. I inherited property from my brother, and we didn't know that you couldn't live in a cancer, but, but being that we got the empty trailer, we'd like to put new floors, make it level, you know, is what we try, what our game plan is, if we can get approved for that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I mean, this, this is common, I mean, it's just usually, it's done, you know, temporarily.
Yeah.
So, um, twelve months, you're good with twelve months?
I feel like we can get it done, I mean, no more than what we doing, I feel like we can get it done in twelve months, if I can get them in gear.
And obviously, if not, then you can always come back and ask for some more.
Okay, so we good to go as we planned, as of now?
This goes before Commissioners, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
This, it'll have to go before the County Commissioners.
Okay, so we'll know next meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ask a follow-up, just, just to be clear, I mean, the RV will either, it will no longer be occupied once the.
Sure, correct.
Right, 'cause we have had issues with.
Yeah, correct.
That's a solution for somebody to still.
It's just a family member on the wise, she didn't have nowhere to go, and better stay there, she gotta have a place to go. She don't have nothing to go, so we just trying to give her a place to live, and then when this come up, we found out we couldn't do that, and that's when we want, started working on the mobile home to try to give her in there, put new floors down and.
Yeah.
Make it level.
Mr. Souls, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna connect the mobile home, I mean, the, uh, RV to the sewer system of the mobile home?
There's two lots. There's two set, tank, each one of them's got a separate tank, and when my brother moved the old mobile home, he, he was gonna move the camper over there until he get things situated, but he lost his battle with cancer, so that's where it's been stopped at. And I inherited the property, so.
So you're gonna, you're gonna.
But we can move the mobile, we can move the camper and, and hook it up to the tank and power, is what, you know, until we can get her into the mobile home.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, even in favor or against? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Uh, not for or against, I just wanna be clear, the number of campers on the site is one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
For a maximum of twelve months.
Gotcha, all right.
And, and if he's not done with his construction in twelve months, he'll have to come back and ask for an extension on time.
That's, that's whatever, I just wanna make sure it's not multiple stacking up on the property.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, can I get your name?
Uh, Kane Martin.
Kane Martin?
Yes, sir.
Kane Martin, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Assume he's a neighbor.
Assume he's a neighbor. Anyone else wish to speak? Call for a motion.
To make a motion to approve of staff recommendations.
To make a motion to approve a staff recommendation.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith, others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Good luck, sir. Item four is a public hearing for Edward Vance, request a variance from ordinance section three point twenty-one point one to allow for occupation of a RV during home construction. This is located at seventeen seventeen Shoney Egypt Road. It's on AR one, this is the third district. Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. So like the previous item that we heard, the applicant is requesting that variance to allow for occupation of an RV or camper during home construction. The applicant has applied for a residential building permit. This is consistent with the future land use map, as this parcel is residential and will be residential. And staff is recommending alternative number one, and again, those conditions do apply, that the camper may be occupied for up to twelve months, and that upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the camper shall be vacated and disconnected from well and septic.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
How you doing? I'm Edward Vance. I'm the one that applied.
You think you can do it in twelve months, Ed?
Well, Alan Rich is gonna be the one building it, so.
Never happened.
I should.
Hope he's watching. So it'd be the same thing. I mean, if he does it, you know, you just have to come back and extend the time for whatever reasons. Any questions? Anyone else wish to speak? Call for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith, those in favor? Any opposed, motion carried by all. Item five is a public hearing for Darryl Bozeman, requesting a variance from ordinance section six point two point three to allow for reduction in accessory structure setbacks located at one oh nine Lexus Court, fifth district. Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. So this application came to us, it was a code enforcement action. This variance is for side setback of an accessory structure. Our land use analyst did go out and measure the side setbacks from this building. It's about three and a half feet from the side setback, or the property line, excuse me. It's about three and a half feet from the side property line. The ordinance does require five feet, so it's, the variance will be for one and a half feet. I know looking at this picture here, there's my cursor, it does look like it's over the property line. It is not. It's actually one point five feet this way from the property line. So based on that, and here is some pictures that the applicant did send to us to show that, and this is the fencing here, and here's the accessory. So there have been, the applicant did have to move the fence. I think there were some boundary discrepancies initially, and the fence was moved, which is part of why the applicant has applied for this variance. And it has moved the boundary line closer to the accessory structure, so.
Because they thought that outer brick pylon at the front of that picture was the property line, and they decided that's wrong, just move it in?
That's what it looks like.
Yes. So staff does recommend alternative number one.
So, yeah, just, apparently, there's been, I think, up to three different surveys of this property by different entities involved in this. None of them have been recorded. And so the only legal document description that we have for the property is the original plat. So that's what we went by as far as our measurements.
And that's also what's on your screen.
Yep, it's also what's on your screen. So the determination of the variance is based on the original plat that was recorded. I know that, and we were told by other entities that there was survey, but nothing was recorded.
Did they submit anything else with the surveys? Because that's the very question I had, like, that's the original subdivision.
Yeah.
I mean, how do we know where the fence or any of it is?
That's right. So that's what we went by.
Well, but I'm saying if they did a...
They had corner markers. They had corner markers.
So what happens when we approve the variance and then the surveyor finally figures out that he's now encumbered the other property?
Any survey that is done has to be recorded at the courthouse. All the surveys that were done, none of them were recorded at the courthouse.
The surveyor signed the survey? Do we know?
We haven't seen a copy of it?
But you have the subdivision plat, right?
Yes, sir. That's the one that's on the screen.
Yep.
That's the original subdivision plat. It's not gonna show encroachments. That's what the subsequent surveys were showed.
Well, it should show the corners and the lot dimensions. I mean, they should be able to survey off of this.
They, they've got the corners in them, which is, I agree. I totally agree with you. And if I'm, if I'm gonna take, I'm, I'm just, you know, that's not, that's not a cheap process to go through.
Well, is the applicant here?
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either, I mean, I don't have a problem with the building. I just, I'm confused while I can't get a survey.
Hi, I'm Sheila Bozeman. Darryl couldn't be here tonight. He had an emergency. So, yeah, we've been out there since twenty fifteen, so we went by the original plat. So once the land got re-surveyed, that's when the issue came out, and when they moved the markers. And that's when the issue came arise as to what happened with the shed.
It was re-surveyed, they moved markers that they weren't legally allowed to move because they didn't record the survey.
Who's they?
I don't know.
Whoever built the house next door. Because there's several houses, new houses coming out there now, so when they build those houses less than six months ago, they're the ones who re-surveyed.
Yeah, you were, you were kinda first.
Yeah, we've been there since twenty fifteen.
Coming in trying to take your property.
That's what it, so...
We've been there since twenty fifteen when no one was out there, so now it's...
How long's your building been there?
Maybe over a year or two.
So you didn't just build it?
No, we didn't just build it.
I'm on your side.
So did, was my statement earlier correct that that, in this picture here, that post is where the original fence was, and then you moved it in?
Yeah, we had to move it. We, we just moved it back some when they said that it was on their line, so.
I, I wish we'd have been called when that survey was done.
Move your fence back.
Whole point of permanent markers are...
That's expensive, too, because it's brick columns.
Yeah, it's expensive.
You can't move permanent markers. That's why they're permanent. Or apparently you can. Do you have further questions?
No, I was just trying to figure out how we're defining the setback needed, how we knew how far back it needed to be. That was what I was trying to get to.
By the only legal document description that there exists, and that's the plat.
And it's supposed to be five foot, and now it's gonna be one and a half foot. The variance is asking for a one and a half foot setback.
It's supposed to be...
It's supposed to be five feet, and right now it's three and a half.
Three and a half.
So it's a foot and a half. So the variance is a foot and a half, right?
Is that off the moved markers, or is that off of the original?
It's off of what is currently out there right now, so it'll be, so it's the moved.
So what actually could happen is if they built a...
Needs to move the fence back and build a bigger storage shed.
Put a lean-to on it.
She will not. She will confess here tonight.
No, we don't wanna move the structure. We're just trying to get this cleared up, because it's been an issue.
All right, thank you.
So what is the verdict, or we have to come back?
Is there, is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Yes, ma'am. So, Ms. Bozeman, we may, we may have a question for you in a moment. We'll let this lady right here speak. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Hi. So my name's Amber Dombey. I am the property right next door that's being encroached on. That fence post that they're saying they just moved the fence, no. That, that fence post was just erected. They've been trying to move over. We were told when we purchased the property that there was a two-inch overhang of their roof, of their shed, onto our property. So when we...
A two inch?
Yes, a two-inch overhang of the roof of that property when we purchased it in December of twenty twenty-three. So we were told that our property went to the back corner of that shed. And now the property line is suddenly in question. And suddenly, they're saying that they're moving their stuff. They were not. They were moving that fence post, and they were erecting a new fence closer to our property. This is directly impacting the value of our property.
So what, what, what has and hasn't happened? So are you familiar with the survey and why?
I have heard through the grapevine, through the HOA, that there were surveys being done because there are questions as to whether or not the property markers have been moved. That is the extent of my knowledge. Supposedly, an HOA representative is here today.
So when you bought your house, your lender didn't require you to get a survey?
No. We were told that there were markers already there, and that's what they went off of.
Yeah, she was buying a platted lot. But the building was already there when you bought the property?
It was.
And you knew it already extended over to your line? So why's it an issue now?
I don't understand why two inches. Where do two inches, because we're, we're not talking about two inches.
No, the eve of the, you see the roof?
Yeah, the roof line.
Eve hangs over the...
Not the building, but just the soffit.
I got you.
And we discussed with the HOA when we were moving that there were issues with the lot lines. And there were questions.
Knowing that, right?
We did. I also have in writing from the HOA that they are pursuing this to the fullest extent of the law.
So.
Let's hear from the HOA.
We don't, we don't determine property lines.
I, I, I understand that. But if you're going to make a decision based off of easement and how far back something should be, why are you not interpreting the property line? Because now the property line is in question. So you're going to make a decision based off of half of the information when they have had three surveys done, and they will not record any of them.
Who is we, they had, who, who had the three surveys done?
I do not know. I am not privy to that information.
So, but you do own the property. You, you have the right to have your property surveyed.
I, I understand the HOA is handling this. I know.
Now, that would, that would be...
The HOA is still under Smith family.
Let's hear from that guy.
Please, only two representatives.
Bring him to the line.
Mr. Ron, could you come to the podium?
Yes. So Smith is still the declarant?
Hey, get your name.
Damon Ron, sorry. Smith is still the declarant of the property. We only have two representatives, which I think we just got, right?
I was told by David that the head of the HOA will be here tonight.
Anyway, they, you know, they control the area over there completely. Our board really doesn't have the votes to do anything, honestly.
Your board being the HOA?
Yeah, and the Ramsey.
Because you still have a declarant.
That's correct. And they just purchased the extra property behind there, which they plan on building, too, so it just keeps compounding on top of it, so.
Who is the declarant, Mr. Ron?
Smith family, Lamar Smith, I believe. That piece back there. Yeah. Because there've been builders, Winchester, a few others have gone through, but Smith is the primary right now that's in there presently.
I see.
It's unfortunate.
And I'm very confused then, because there was an election held on May sixteenth of twenty twenty-four for the board. I've got the email.
Which board?
HOA.
HOA.
HOA board.
And that's...
So we, we were given two representatives, representative, then the other were appointed by the Smith family, so.
So you're just the steering committee. You're HOA right there.
Basically, just a nap. You're just a nap at that point.
But also, I mean, we, we have a plat that, that we're going by. I mean, we, you know, if there's a discrepancy on a property line, that's a civil matter that has to be clarified in court or wherever between two surveyors or however that works out. This board does not handle civil matters. Nor does this board have to, we don't, we also don't deal with HOAs. So whatever the homeowner association has, so what we have is, we have a platted subdivision on that map over your head that shows how far the building in question is over.
Uh huh. And if you go to the overlay again?
GIS maps are not accurate.
No, or, yes, that is correct. You talking about...
Probably shouldn't use them.
They're used throughout the country, ma'am. That it's not accurate. They're not survey level. That's how, it's just a tax parcel map. There's nothing defining where house structure on either one of these lots is built right now. There's no survey showing that. It's impossible to know where either one of them are. I'm pretty good with property lines. I don't feel like I could accurately go measure it, because you had to run a string between those corners, and even then, I wouldn't be confident that I found the right two corners. So, I mean, both, both sides have issues, but I just don't feel like they're ours right now. They need to figure them out. And then if there's a variance needed, show them out that proves it.
So you think there needs to be a verified, recorded survey? So you're saying staff's not qualified to go measure the lot? That's what I just heard correctly?
I'm saying, I don't know how...
I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about us. When we went out and measured it based on this plat and marked it off, you're telling me that we weren't qualified to do that?
I thought you said the corners had been moved.
Uh-uh. Hold on. Is that what you're saying?
Saying that I don't know how you go and establish exactly measurements from two points from here to there to know that it's a foot and a half. That's all I'm saying. I would expect that they submit something, so staff doesn't have to do that. They submit something that proves exactly what, I'm not saying that staff did something wrong. I'm just saying, I would expect that, that they have to prove where they are on their own property.
There should be corners, though, and staff should be able to. Correct? I mean, there, there, this is a platted subdivision. There are corner markers. I mean, they're required to be there.
By law.
By law.
And we don't approve final plats unless they're in there.
Great.
But they could have been altered? They could have been moved in the, in the past?
I mean, that is, that's problematic. I guess that's always...
That's a whole nother story. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. If, if, if the corner markers are altered, then her argument and, and the...
Bozeman.
Is a, is a moot point because you can't move the markers. Once that plat's recorded, that's the end of the story. And, and I don't, I, I, I hope no one's shown me different that that's not the case.
That they've been moved.
That they've been moved. Now, she's saying that they have, at some point in time, there was something to compel them to move the fence. But when Elizabeth went out there to measure it, it's based on the corner markers. So if one of these surveys out there that exists somewhere, the HOAs or wherever, if somebody can bring that survey in or go ahead and record it, it becomes a legal document that we can use to measure that accordingly. But, I mean, if somebody...
So that should be a stipulation to the...
Well, do you know if the homeowner association did a survey? Okay.
I mean, all the, when Smith bought the property, they did, did you guys measure from coverage to the roof?
Yeah.
And establish based on the plat right there?
And normally, it is left up to the... I mean, whoever you, you're... you, I mean, the, whoever you, you're, you, I mean, uh, the landowner in your place to prove it wrong. Um, you know, as an adjacent property owner, I have to go get my surveyor to come out and show that they altered the property line.
So why can't that happen?
It can, but you have to hire a surveyor that will stand on a survey that says this line is not right.
Who's to say that's gonna happen at this point since you have three recordings that aren't recorded?
Once again, I mean, I, I personally believe we have to base our decision on where the corner markers are. I mean, we can't verify that they've been moved or not been moved. And I think everything we do in here every month depends on this is X number of feet from this property line and there is a lot of assumption that goes along with the property line is right and it hasn't been altered. Until someone comes and shows us that it's been altered and we made the wrong decision, I, I don't, I don't see how we make any other decision.
Do we require the applicant to prove the property line exists and that there are gonna be?
We've never made anybody prove a property line. I mean, the property lines are surveyed. This is a platted subdivision. I mean, you see it.
I see it.
But why wouldn't you?
And the corner markers are required to be put in by the developer.
Okay.
And so we have no reason to believe, I mean, unless proven that they have been, that they've been altered.
Why wouldn't you request a variance before putting a building in?
Because at the time the building was put in, they were exactly five foot off the-
Well, and they, and, and they, I mean, we get, we have to give variances all the time for buildings. I mean, people build it, the county misses it, doesn't realize that they built it too close. I mean, we've had houses built too close to property lines. This is nothing new. Um, I mean, people just sometimes make mistakes when they measure and they get it wrong.
I just-
So, I mean, we've made people tear buildings down.
Yeah.
So.
I just, I find it a little strange that you wouldn't request a variance ahead of time, that you wouldn't have things permitted and shown where they're at on the property ahead of time. When we lived in Florida, you had to go to the county before erecting any structures, including the fence. And that had to be done based off of property lines and a survey that was done before anything happened to the property. So I'm a little confused why we're doing things backwards.
So for fences here in Effingham County, we don't, unless they're over a certain height, we don't require a permit for that.
I, I understand that.
That explains the permit for the fence. Uh, for the building, again, to speak to Chairman Burns's point, um, you know, if the fence was initially where it was, then this building, because, uh, when our, uh, staff went out and measured-
The fence was not where it initially says.
Is right, based on that. If she moved that fence, if it was where it was initially, she would have been in compliance with the ordinance. So the building would have been approved initially, so there wouldn't have been a reason for the variance.
Sir? Yeah.
How long you been in, in your house? Three years?
No.
They just got it.
December first.
Okay. So the set of paperwork that comes with the closing of a house would include the deed or the plat or something like that with the deed, burden, pay. Can you find that and bring it into us?
I can get the paperwork we were provided.
Okay, I would, I would, I would like to see that and see if that survey is in there that everybody's talking about, but nobody's seen.
I don't recall a survey.
Yeah, so if it, we would, we would need to see that to verify the other corners on your other side.
Mm-hmm.
But since you just recently did it, it should be fairly recent
I, I can go through it.
stack of information.
I've got a folder. I don't recall a survey.
Okay. If, yeah, if you just wanna send it to us or bring it to us, that would be helpful.
I can email it.
That would be even better.
Mm-hmm. And I'll email you if we don't have anything. But then at that, at that rate, and I know it's not your old job, what are the builders doing? This is a new neighborhood with a lot of properties.
Which is why I want you to send me that information.
Uh huh.
You want me to table this?
All right, do you have anything further?
No.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against? Mr. Bozeman, I, I do have one question for you. So can you explain the fence and why the fence?
What, explain the fence?
Yeah, why, why it got put where it was and then why it was moved.
Well, it was, we put it where it was because we thought we were in our area.
Did you think that was the property line?
Yes, of course. So we, we said it where we thought we were within our property line. Then when it got resurveyed, they said that we were not. So that's when we tried to move it away. And that's what happened.
Who, who was the surveyor?
Uh, whoever, Smith Homes, they're the ones who's been, whoever built her house.
Did they resurvey it whenever they were getting ready to build her home?
As far as I, as far as I know.
They resurveyed that lot?
Yeah, cause we've had two or three surveyors come out there and we thought, okay, they told us that we were over, so we was like, okay, we'll just move it. And with no questions asked, but then it keeps coming up. But if the original plat shows that we are where we're supposed to be, what is the issue? And it has not been recorded evidently.
You don't need a variance.
So what is the issue? The Smith family homes are not surveying their land. That's not on us. And if a homeowner buys a property and it had been surveyed, is that our-
Question, I guess, the question is, is the corner marker for the lot in the correct place? I guess that's where it matters. That's, that's the-
Yes, it is.
When did the changes take place on the fence?
Oh, um, right after they moved in, maybe. They said, when they said we were over, we just tried to accommodate and move. I can't give you the exact date. I think she's been there maybe less than six months, maybe, so.
December, I mean.
Yeah.
August, eight months.
So we just tried to accommodate.
What you want to do, Bob?
You know, I mean, the, it, it don't add up.
Yeah.
There's, there's, there's your number.
Where are you at?
But we measured according to what we were given the ability to do.
I get it.
Yeah. And I just, you know, what,
what concerns me the most is not her and not her, it's if a builder is moving permanent markers.
Yes, that's right.
Different than a recorded plat.
And to clarify, I did not at first realize you meant you thought somebody moved the line. I thought when there was discussion about a survey was performed that wasn't recorded, you can go survey an encroachment and have a map that the surveyor signs off that doesn't have to be recorded.
That's right.
It's still a good survey. That's where I was at.
Yeah.
It's possible to prove this with a survey and not move any property corners. That's all I was trying to say.
Also, there's a superintendent on site right now. They're presently building houses. So if we sent someone from the county out there to go, at least take a picture of the actual drawings that they're going off of, we could see what the last recorded plat date was.
The coordinates are always the same.
Um, we're going out there doing code inspection anyway, so.
I mean, that's, that's a pretty simple lot. It's a hundred and fifty feet across the back. And so is the next one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I, I'd say we table it and see if, if the, if the marker in the back is right.
Is there any further discussion? I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion to table and, uh, so that the property owner, um, next door can bring, um, her information to Steve Chandler so he can get to the bottom of this encroachment.
I have a motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second, Mr. Thompson, all those in favor of tabling?
It's gonna come up next month.
Motion carried.
I'm sorry, what?
Postpone to the next one.
So, yes, we'll try to get some more information, make sure that we're getting this right, basically.
Well, that's no problem, but I can tell you now that you're gonna be getting a lot of homeowners over here who are not correct. Cause I don't think they've been going off the plat that you guys are going by, but.
So there is some truth to that statement. We've got a couple more, too.
Thank you, Ms. Bozeman.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry for the delay.
Sorry, Ms. Bozeman.
Thank you.
Item number six is a public hearing for Stephen Dougherty, request to rezone, uh, plus or minus one point six out of seven point six seven acres from AR one, AR two to allow for subdivision to create a new home site located at five ninety-five Orange Dorf Loop, third district. Ms. Chelsea.
Yes, sir. So the applicant again is asking to rezone that one point six zero acres to AR two. Um, out of the seven point six seven acres, um, the one point six zero acres has to rezone to AR two because it does fall below that five acre threshold. Um, it does have approximately three hundred and eighty-six feet of frontage along Orange Dorf Loop. Um, it is consistent with the future land use map, as you can see here. Um, staff recommends alternative number one.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the staff recommendations.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Higgins, all those in favor of approval? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item seven is a public hearing for Mary L. Godlove, request to rezone one acre out of six point four nine from AR one, AR two to allow for subdivision for a new home site located at one oh eight Oak Street, second district. Ms. Chelsea.
Yes, sir. So like the previous, um, item, the applicant is requesting to rezone that one acre uh, because it does fall below that five acre threshold. It does need to be rezoned to AR two. Um, and this parcel has approximately two hundred and sixteen feet of frontage along Oak Street. Um, it is consistent with the future land use map and staff recommends alternative number one.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Thompson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item number eight is a public hearing for Robert L. McCorkle the third as agent for MS Two Farms LLC to rezone one hundred and eighty-eight point two out of two hundred and fifty-nine point three three acres from AR one to B three in light industrial to allow for commercial and industrial uses located on Blue Jay Road, second district. Ms. Chelsea.
Yes, sir. So the applicant again is re, is asking to rezone that one hundred and eighty-eight point two acres to B three in light industrial for commercial and industrial uses. Um, what you have there, um, on your desk in front of you is the, um, development of regional impact, um, final notice. Um, they did, and by they, I mean the Department of, um, DCA, so Community Affairs, um, did review the rezoning and they find it consistent with the area. Um, the proposed development, uh, does ask to rezone thirteen point nine nine acres along the Effingham Parkway to B three. Thirteen point nine two acres along Blue Jay Road will remain AR one and fifty-seven point two one acres to the south to remain AR one. And then, um, due to the Effingham Parkway bifurcating the parcel, um, fifty-one point eight zero acres to the east will be zoned, uh, light industrial. And then, um, as you can see here where the blue is, uh, that also will be light industrial. Um, this application was completed and accepted on June twenty-first. So, um, there's no confusion there and it is consistent with the future land use map. As you can see here, uh, these parcels are projected to be industrial. Uh, staff does recommend alternative number one.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chelsea. Any discretion at this time?
Well, I think maybe this map actually answers a question I was gonna ask. Um, the, the remaining residential along Blue Jay, is that to align with the future land use map?
Say that one more time.
The, the, I noticed the zoning, uh, the proposed zoning map, uh, retains kind of a sliver or a, a parallel amount of residential along Blue Jay. I, I was just curious about it. It's a little unique in that, uh, but now that I see with the future land use map, I think I see why that is. Aligning with that.
You're talking about that little panhandle that goes down to that parcel number four fourteen A?
Well, actually, if y'all can back out to what-
Oh, yeah, the AR one then.
Right, the little piece of yellow that's left up there. I was just curious about that. So, it's not right there, the, the small piece of yellow that's along Blue Jay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see it. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Chad Zittrow with Kern and Company. Uh, also with me tonight is Mr. Robert McCorkle and Tom Tindall with our Cressa Partners, which also is a, a relative of the, um, property owners. Um, thank you, Chelsea, for that introduction. I did wanna go through a little bit of a, a timeline on this property and, uh, Mr. Thompson, I'll get to some of your questions. So this particular property was acquired by, uh, the late Lawton Neese in June of nineteen seventy-eight. Since that time, it's been managed for timber operations and things of that nature, civil culture, um, since he acquired the property. In the September of two thousand and seven, as the majority of you are aware, the initial plan for the Effingham Parkway, um, that, that concept plan was presented towards the Board of Commissioners, not the exact plan that you see today. But that's the one that was kinda introduced at Effingham Parkway becoming. Um, in November twenty-ten, Mr. Neese deceased, and then May of twenty-eleven, the property was obtained by Sue Neese, actually, and Shannon Neese. Um, and there's, I, I'll get that a little bit more later. In June of twenty-fourteen, the revised concept plan, which is the current configuration of Effingham Parkway, was submitted and approved by the Board of Commissioners, which basically bifurcates and split this property. Um, then in March of twenty-sixteen, there was the announcement of the Omnitrek IDA, Effingham IDA joint venture, which is directly adjacent to this property and obviously an, an industrial development taking place there. Um, fast forward to March of twenty-twenty-three, Effingham Parkway is moving forward and the right-of-way deeds for that parkway are actually conveyed. And then in September twenty-twenty-one is the, the groundbreaking. So that's kinda how things are progressing along this property. Um, in December twenty-twenty-two, Sue and Shannon Neese created the entity MS Two Farms. And so while it's a, you know, business LLC, that is the current ownership, it's actually descendants of the late Lawton Neese that's had this since nineteen seventy-eight. Um, in November of twenty-twenty-three, the county adopted the modified and current version of the future land use map, which shows this property as being industrial. Um, back in May of twenty-twenty-four, um, there was a portion of the roadway of Otis Second, your roadway that had never been conveyed to the pr, to the county, even though they maintained it. And so that was kinda cleaned up and the county agreed to release the, um, maintenance obligation on that portion of the roadway. And then, of course, now summer twenty-twenty-five is the anticipated completion of Effingham Parkway. So that just kinda gives you a little history of the property, things that have taken place around it and how we've kinda gotten to this point. Um, going back to the staff recommendations, um, we agreed to everything that is mentioned. We do think it's very important that this is consistent with the future land use map. Uh, it is also, should be noted that going back to Mr. Thompson's questions, in some meetings going through with staff, um, and looking at different things, there was concern over the frontage along Blue Jay Road and we did choose to leave that as, uh, you know, AR as it currently is. There's also a larger piece that's primarily wetlands that is along Hodgeville that is remaining in its current, uh, you know, current zoning. Um, so we've not chosen to modify those. In addition to that, along Effingham Parkway, there's a strip of thirteen acres, um, that we have chosen to uh, submit as B three and the purpose of that is, I think the county is kinda working on a corridor plan and would like to see that as commercial frontage along that. Now you will note on the north side of the parkway there, we did not choose to do that and the reason for that is the gas line is basically right along that frontage. There's really not room for any, um, you know, business commercial development there. But that is kinda how we've gotten to this point and where we're at. Um, I will note that there was a little bit of confusing, confusion going back to when the, not confusion, just lack of clarification going back to when the, um, Otis Second abandonment took place. So there was a discussion about when we closed the road and what we do. the um, Otis Seconder abandonment took place. So there was a discussion about when we closed the road and what we do. And what I have for you tonight that I'll go ahead and hand out and then go over. So there was discussion when, you know, we petitioned for the the closure of Otis Seconder roadway as to what impacts it would have. And in doing that, um, you know, basically there was a discussion about Effingham Parkway being open, when we would close and what impacts that would have. And so to clarify, you know, we're recommending conditions be added to the staff report. And the conditions that we recognize are uh, requi- are suggesting the physical closure of the portion of Otis Seconder roadway that that was agreed to be maintained shall take place um, not prior to the following. Effingham Parkway is complete and operational. That'll alleviate a lot of the traffic off of Hodgeville. It's my understanding that's taking place to the summer of summer of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we did want to put a date in there of September of twenty twenty-five, just so if the contractor gets bankrupt, whatever happens, that there's kind of a drop dead date in there that we have to protect ourselves. In addition, with that closure, there was an area for a cul-de-sac to be added at the termination. We're not asking for that to take place from any other landowners. We agreed to provide that acreage, and so we would de-datate the county in the form of a right-of-way or easement, uh, you know, whichever the county prefers. Both of those will be required to take place. Um, and in the event that any of that does not take place, then we acknowledge that no certificates of occupancy can be issued on this development un- until that occurs. So some things that we just wanted to clean up and clarify as part of this rezoning application. Um, other than that, I think I covered the majority of it. Um, neither myself, uh, Mr. Tindall or Mr. McCorkle can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Rowan. Questions, comments from the board at this time? The little triangle between the Parkway and the gas line.
Correct.
That'll be done.
There's a portion of that that's wetlands. She there's a portion of that that's wetlands. We have had the delineation done. There's a little bit of acres there, but there's not enough room for industrial development. We don't have any plans for that now. Obviously, a a a site plan is a requirement of the staff recommendation to come back. Anything we put there, we, you know, would have to be reviewed, but we don't have any plans for that area.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Close public comment.
Mr. Thompson, you got some?
Well, with the zoning being three different zonings on the properties, and that those zoning lines aren't following the parcel lines, right? Are we going to require them to subdivide it based off of the zoning concept? How does that work with it?
No, sir. It'll be split zoning.
Unless you want to make that recommendation.
No, I just didn't know how.
Yeah, we we could do split zoning, but that's up to you.
When we discussed with staff, um, I, you know, it was not a requirement or what was, but quite frankly, internally, it benefits us as property owners to go through and do that. So we're not, we we do not object to doing that at at some point in the future. Not, uh, we'd like to get the zoning approved first, but would that be a condition to complete?
It just seems like once something sells, it's going to be a lot easier to have that line clearly defined, but I I it's not. I I was still a little interested in, but I understand, I think the single family or the remaining AR one is kind of a buffer to us across the way.
Yeah.
On Blue Jay.
Yeah, agreed. Still AR one. And and I mean, as far as the zoning goes, I mean, he's got it narrowed down thirteen point nine two, you know, I mean, so.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I just.
Very easily, yeah, he can very easily be done, so. You got anything?
No.
Can you come up with something?
Just miss us.
You good?
You good?
Yeah.
This staff seeing these recommendations, all are good with the east as well?
Yeah, that's what we did last, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we weren't.
That's our bad.
This board was not privy to the Otis Seconder, but I but I.
It's that's my fault. That's not.
But 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 I mean, I I do.
They should be included, yeah. I think that's a great idea.
Agreed.
Yeah. Yeah, that's my fault.
No, you're good.
I know.
I knew I knew about it. I mean, they they could have made theirself.
I think I'll take some time off.
Educated. Um, make a motion?
Yeah, I'll I'll make a motion to approve uh, the rezoning uh, with the original staff um, requirements as well as the additional petitioner-provided recommended conditions, one A, one B, and two. I don't have to read those all the way into it. Okay.
All right. Have motion for approvals.
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith, all those in favor of approval? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you. What else? Is it? Meeting adjourned.